Exactly. You have to color coordinate anything.
I agree. Okay. We're going to go ahead and call the August 5th Planning Commission meeting to order. Welcome. And if everybody could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can go ahead and have roll call.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Present.
Commissioner Marsters.
Present.
Vice Chair Silverman.
Present.
Chair Harper Pedersen.
Present.
Okay. Now we have public comment, and this is actually limited to the items that are not on the agenda. So is anybody here to speak about an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Seeing none, then we're going to go ahead and move on to our public hearing. And I am going to go ahead and read this for everybody's benefit.
Do you want your minutes first?
Yeah, that'd be good. Why don't I do that? No, I'm going to skip over them. Excuse me. Approval of the minutes, the July 1st minutes. Does anybody have any changes or additions to the minutes?
I do not.
I do not?
Neither.
I...
Move approval?
Oh, sorry, I do.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry.
Are you naming her again?
No, no. Just a couple of quick things, and they're pretty minor, but I wanted to make sure that they were noted for the record in case it becomes a concern in the future. Under 201 industrial, I believe it was me, I had asked about any concerns about the illumination of the previous sign. That's also true for the heritage sign, or excuse me, the monument sign on 1501 1599. Again, I know that's minor, but I'm just thinking in case there's any future problems, I want them to know that the commission did ask if there were any concerns about that. And I know I did ask that.
So to add the concerns, basically.
And can you repeat the concern?
Right. The concern was about, was to see if anybody else had had any concerns about the lighting of the previous sign. Okay? And then under item C on 1001 Chestnut, I had asked if there had been any complaints on the equipment, the equipment noise that's currently there. Those are my only changes.
Move approval with those changes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes approved. Sorry I glossed over that. We're going to go ahead and move on to the public hearing then. Item number six, and I'm going to go ahead and read the paragraph for everybody's benefit. Procedure for public hearing: Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at public hearing described in this notice or in written correspondence that had been delivered to the city prior to public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speakers form, which many of you already have, found at the door, and hand it to the recording secretary, who will hand it up to the dais. And then if you are speaking, please come up to the microphone, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes. And then we will go ahead and move on. So Jill, if you could go ahead and present on 934 Laurel Street.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Jill Lewis, and I'm presenting the staff report for the consideration of our request for design review and grading and dirt hall approval associated with the construction of a new mixed-use building at 934 Laurel Street. As you can see from this image, it's surrounded by single-family residential on both sides and to the rear, mixed use across the street. It's a 5,842-square-foot vacant lot on the west side of Laurel Street between Arroyo Avenue and Morse Boulevard. The zoning is MUN, Neighborhood Mixed Use, and the general plan designation is Mixed Use Low Density. The purpose of the MUN district is to provide an appropriate transition from mixed-use areas into the residential neighborhoods. This district allows a mix of residential and commercial development appropriately scaled to ensure residential physical form to relate to adjacent single-family residential neighborhoods. Allowable uses include retail, commercial, and office uses, as well as residential development of up to 20 units per net acre. And this is the implementing zoning designation for the corresponding mixed-use low-density land use designation as well. The project is a new three-story mixed-use building, two commercial spaces on the ground floor. The front suite is 1,060 square feet, and the rear is 1,258 square feet. Two two-bedroom apartments on the second floor, and the front unit is 1,108 square feet, and the rear is 1,121 square feet, and one 1,550-square-foot three-bedroom apartment on the third floor. There are seven underground parking spaces, including one van-accessible ADA space with storage for five bicycles. Also proposed are landscaping and other site amenities, with 1,179 square feet of landscaping provided in total. So these are the required findings that you're asked to make this evening, and I'm going to go through and highlight them one by one. So the first is that the proposal is consistent with the applicable standards and requirements of this title, that title being Title 18, which is the zoning ordinance. A little tough to read, so I apologize. I just wanted to highlight the relevant development standards within the MUN district. So maximum FAR is 2.0 in this district, and the proposal is 1.5. The underground garage is excluded from FAR calculations. The maximum height of the structure depends on proximity to the RS district, which is limited to 30 feet within 40 feet of an RS district and 40 feet within 50 feet of an RS district. And so you'll note that this is a standard that applies to both height, but also to setbacks. And so you'll note that the height at 30 feet is within 30 feet, 3 inches from the RS district, that's to the rear of the property, and 39 feet, 9 inches, within 40 feet, 2 inches of an RS district. So that's why the height is staggered at the rear. Maximum stories, there was a typo in the staff report. It should have been three, is proposed. Minimum setbacks, you can see that the project meets all of these setbacks. The Laurel Street setback is 15 to 18 feet from the curb. These sides, you can have up to zero feet setback. They have provided seven feet on the right side and five feet on the left side. The rear is 30 feet minimum adjacent to an RS district, and the minimum setback that they have provided at the rear, as I explained earlier, is 30 feet, 3 inches. The required side yards for residential uses, which applies to walls containing windows only. The right side is seven feet for kitchen, closet, study, and bath. The minimum on the left side is five feet for bath and kitchen and 10 feet for bedrooms, which complies with the requirement of the MUN district. The minimum residential open space is 150 square feet per unit. Because there's three residential units, that turns out to be 450 square feet required. The project has provided 2,073 square feet total, including both private and common open space. And the minimum amount of landscaping is 20 percent. They've provided 20.2 percent, which is the 1,179 square feet provided earlier. For residential units with two or more bedrooms, the required parking is one and a half spaces per unit in the mixed-use districts, with at least one covered space per unit. With three apartments with at least two bedrooms per unit, the required number of parking spaces for the residential use is four and a half spaces, or we round up to five. Since the two proposed commercial suites are each less than 1,500 square feet in area, they're not required to provide parking for those two commercial suites, provided that the future tenants are retail, personal services, eating and drinking establishments, food and beverage retail sales, offices, and banks and financial institutions. The seven total spaces provided in the garage are enough to serve the residential units and still have two extra parking spaces. A memorandum that was attached to your staff reports recommended that, due to the single-lane ramp, an amount of maneuvering required to get in and out of parking spaces within the constrained area, that the garage parking be limited to residents and employees of those commercial suites only. So the second finding is that the proposal is consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plans the City Council has adopted. If there are no specific plans within the city, staff must consider the general plan alone when evaluating the project. Sorry, these didn't come out better, but I think the architects have better renderings. So this is the front elevation facing Laurel Street. This is the left elevation, which faces 940 Laurel. That's the property to the south of the project. This is the rear elevation, which faces the rear adjacent single-family residential that fronts on Walnut Street. And this is the right elevation that faces 926 Laurel Street. As provided in the staff report, the project is consistent with general plan policies that encourage a distinctive architectural style and use of high-quality materials, such as two different stucco finishes, a metal trellis accent, canvas awnings featured on the front and rear elevations, metal-clad wood casement windows and doors carried throughout all four elevations, with the garage door and balconies painted to match, a standing-seam metal roof, and copper flashing to provide definition between the second and third stories in addition to the smooth plaster cornice. The railing at the third story includes additional copper flashing and inset square panels at the front and rear elevations to create additional articulation and creative shading. The third story steps back from both the rear and front elevation, which is not required of the latter, but does break up the perceived mass of the structure, allowing it to read as a two-story building from passersby on Laurel Street. The third finding is that the proposal is consistent with the applicable design review criteria in Section 18.29.060, design review criteria. Based on feedback received, I'm going to spend my time highlighting these two design review criteria. So item D, the design is compatible with neighboring development by providing a harmonious transition in scale and character between different districts. And E, that the project contributes to the creation of an attractive and visually interesting built environment that includes a variety of building styles and designs with well-articulated structures that present varied building facades, roof lines, and building heights within a unifying context that encourages increased pedestrian activity and promotes compatibility among neighboring land uses within the same or different districts. So criteria D, if you look at the general plan policies and actions that have been in place since 2009, policies LU 9.5 and LU 9.13 encourage buffers, building scale, enassing transitions, screening, setbacks between new multifamily residential development and adjacent single-family neighborhoods. Actions LU 9.1 and LU 9.2 direct the city to update development standards to address transitions between multifamily residential adjacent to single-family homes.
Jill, can I ask you a question? Can you go back one?
Sure.
We don't have a set of standards for the transitions between multifamily residential and single-family homes, do we?
Yes. You may recall that I went through and described, I can go to the slide. So I described the maximum height within proximity of an RS district.
Okay. But that's really...
The zoning.
That's really zoning, but that's not talking of design transitions. That really doesn't address the design between a single-family home and a different building. So these are zoning, but they're not design transitions in any way.
Okay.
Commissioner Marsters, I think if we can go back to the slide that Jill was previously on, we want to point out that the general plan policies were developed back in 2009 to address these issues, and one of the actions required that the city update the zoning ordinance. So the zoning ordinance set in place development standards to address the transitional issues, which get back to the development standards that Jill was just talking about, which would be the 50-foot height allowance. But when you're within the proximity to RS, that allowance is reduced, and that's what's getting at the transitional issues that the general plan identified. So these were the policies and actions identified in the general plan, and then if we go to the next slide, these are the development standards that were set into place to further those transitional policies. So Jill, if you'd like to continue, or if the commission has any more questions, we can take questions after. Thank you.
Okay. As Lisa mentioned, the updated zoning ordinance from 2011 provided the development standards I alluded to earlier. Again, the MUN district is intended to provide an appropriate transition from mixed-use areas into the residential neighborhoods. So, for example, the area across the street is zoned MUSB, and that's intended to have sort of a greater scale than the MUN, which is the buffer between MUSB and RS. Again, as I alluded to earlier, the transitional development standards, there's limited heights within close proximity to RS districts. And again, the rear setbacks, you could do up to zero feet, but if you're adjacent to an RS district, then it's a minimum of 30 feet. Just to give you a little bit of context, this is looking north on Laurel Street. You have commercial development on the corner, commercial across the street. Actually, I believe this is mixed use on this corner and commercial across the street. This is looking south on Laurel, and this is the building at 939 Laurel Street, which is a mixed-use building with commercial ground floor and residential upper floor. And then this is a, just to give you a perspective of, this is again the same building at 939 Laurel Street and 1,001 Laurel Street, which is down there. And this is commercial in between. You have the single-family residential on this side. So, excuse me. This is a project at 1,600 Laurel Street, also zoned MUN. This is an example of a structure that would not be allowed under the current zoning standards. The alley is not taken into account as a separation, so essentially, this project has a zero-foot rear yard setback, and this is RS 6. This is a more recent example, a project that was recently completed, has a 34-foot setback from the rear property line, which is along here. This is the 34-foot distance. And you can see that this building was built with a zero-foot rear yard setback, and this is the same building in the distance at 1,600 Laurel Street. Whoops. All right. The final required finding is that the proposed grading will not affect the drainage or lateral support of other properties in the area, is consistent with the general plan and municipal code, and will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare. The proposed underground garage requires the removal of earth, since the site is flat. It's 1,331 cubic yards of cut, with four cubic yards of fill of that cut, for a total off-hall amount of 1,327 cubic yards of dirt. The Planning Commission approval of this entitlement is required when grading exceeds 1,000 cubic yards. The proposed hall route, which has been approved by the Public Works Department, is a left turn onto Laurel Street, right onto Arroyo Avenue, left onto El Camino Real, right onto Holly Street, onto the Highway 101 North ramp towards San Francisco. The anticipated fill location is a nursery in Half Moon Bay, and conditions have been added to the grading and dirt hall permit to ensure that dirt removal is done safely and in a controlled manner. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission grant design review approval to allow the construction of a new mixed-use building consisting of three new apartments above two ground-floor commercial spaces and an associated grading and dirt hall permit to remove 1,327 cubic yards of earth from 934 Laurel Street. And these would be the suggested formal motions, and I can take any questions you may have of staff at this time.
Does anybody have any questions for Jill at this point? No? Okay. Thank you, Jill. Is the applicant here to make a presentation?
My name is Benjamin McGriff, McGriff Architects, representing Paravati Construction. The applicant. First off, I want to thank Jill for that presentation and introduction. She and the planning department, over the past year and a half, as we've worked through this process, have been critical for us getting to this point tonight and maneuvering through the zoning and planning code, so we really appreciate that. I guess first off, 934 Laurel Street is, as we all know, located near the heart of St. Carlos. Laurel Street itself, I believe, is considered by a lot of people to be the main strip, the main drag, the primary pedestrian fairway. So given this site and its importance to St. Carlos and its proximity to the public transit, the Cal trains, the bus lines, pedestrian-friendly restaurants, and shopping, we felt that a mixed-use proposal would be not only appropriate, but encouraged for this type of site, where we can provide ground-floor commercial space, as well as upper-floor residential units, and take advantage of this great infrastructure provided. I don't know if we can use the slide that has the, is that possible, that has the elevations on that? Because we have a small version of it. There's going to be a little bit of overlap with some of the things that Jill had mentioned, but we're just going to kind of point to parts of the renderings to help illustrate it. The underground parking accommodates seven cars. You can see the entrance here, and the idea was to eliminate the surface, eliminate surface parking and give that over to, again, more commercial space for the neighborhood, as well as landscaping at the sides and rear yards. The two small commercial spaces at ground level help to activate the street. Again, with the setback as prescribed by the zoning and planning, it allows for us to insert a small public plaza that helps to bridge the pedestrian activity of upper Laurel Street and lower Laurel. In addition, we've introduced some canvas awnings to help reduce the scale to something more pedestrian-friendly of the entry level itself. Let's see. At the second floor, we do have two two-bedroom units, mirrors of themselves, with the balcony component connecting the first level of the dwellings up to the second level, the top level of dwellings. The top level is just a three-bedroom unit with kitchen, dining, and living towards Laurel Street side, and two bedrooms to the rear side, both having access to their own balconies. The idea is that when the residents, whether it just be that they're families, or if they're entertaining, if they have dinner out on a balcony, it's one that connects to their kitchen. And the, as kind of going over here already, the setback in the rear is prescribed due to a abutting residential district. 30-foot is the rear wall setback, and a 30-foot height is limited at that setback, and then we move another 10 feet to allow for the extension up. On the front, we, on the Laurel Street side, we implemented a similar measure, even though the zoning allowed for us to pull the mass of the building to have a 40-foot sidewall at that elevation. We found that the reduction of scale, as perceived in the street, did in fact help this building to blend in more comfortably with the existing fabric of the residential homes existing around it. And furthermore, it increased the privacy from the perspective of residents in the top unit looking out beyond their property. Let's see. The architectural style is Mediterranean Revival, popularized in the 1920s in the California coastal towns and cities. There are a number of great precedents in St. Carlos that we took cues from, several These first two on the left are directly across the street on Elm here. This is a multifamily complex next to a single-family residence. It's a good bit taller, but you can see how with the setback and some screening between the two properties, we felt that it allowed for a nice buffer that they can coexist. So it's top left. And the one just below that is another great Mediterranean slash Spanish revival. That's actually the complex of buildings located just to the north of this, the one right across the street. And again, just a few more other precedents of California coastal examples for Mediterranean Revival that helped to popularize the style that we're drawing upon for influence in our design. Within, I guess the primary, what, two of the components of Mediterranean are the Italian and Spanish architecture types. You can find some of the Spanish elements within the balconies and the low-slope roofs. Some of the Italian components are the Doric cornice line, but to And one of the components of the Mediterranean Revival originally was a lush landscape environment, and central to that was a natural palette that allowed the building to look at ease and set within. So that's where our smooth plaster finish and lace stucco plaster finish that are created by their -- the interglow color comes from the limestone that's crushed to create the binder or to create the base for the plaster itself. The dark wood of the balconies I've mentioned before is mirrored and mimicked in the dark bronze of the windows, doors, awnings, and roof. And then we have a softer light, warm green with a light gray canvas awning at the front and rear. Yeah, let's do the -- I'll just go back a little bit and talk about the sightlines relative to this building and the adjacent properties. As you can see, as I mentioned before, the front and the rear of the building both are step-back from their end-wall elevations. And one of the things that that does is, as it's shown in the diagram at the top of the sheet, you can see potential residents standing at the Walnut Street, most Walnut, the interior side of the top unit closest to Walnut Street, and with his kind of vision limited by the top of the parapet, which is actually the balcony for the rear of his unit, as well as the large cork oak tree together fully block the view, not just of the backyard, but actually the rear elevations of the abutting properties to the rear. And so, in addition to this, as we started to mention with the existing cork oak tree, which is a prized species, not just for our site but from a lot of the neighbors, that set the tone for the rest of the rain of our screening for the rest of the property. From the northwest side, we will be introducing in some Italian cypress and a hedgerow along the fence to both, again, screen the building from the street, but as well as add privacy for the residents of the abutting property. On the southeast side, we have a series of pear trees going in, along with some copper string to grow some vines along the fence. And then at the rear, we have, we'll be planting some 10-foot hedges along the three sides of the rear yard to additionally screen below the canopy of the existing cork oak, as well as a new Chinese pistachio at the southernmost corner of the yard. I guess one thing we wanted to kind of point out as it pertains to the screening and what's existing, these aren't the best images, they're pulled off of Google Earth, and these are in their 3D massing program. Here's the project site, here's the project site looking across Laurel, and this is looking from the northeast here. You can see the large oak tree here. This is it in this other perspective. There are a series of Italian cypress, mature Italian cypress already planted on this property line of this abutting neighbor. It's hard to see, but it's long there. And there's an existing row of various trees and dense growth along other parts of the Walnut Street side property line fence. So the point I'm trying to get at here is that this building is pretty well set in or shrouded to a certain degree, as it is with the existing vegetation, and we intend to supplement that with some of our --
And can you just repeat that in the microphone for public record?
So I'm bouncing around a little bit here, guys, my apologies. That plaster sample is an example of the smooth plaster. They'll be going over most of the building, that is the color as well. At the lowest level, a little tough to see in the rendering, but we'll also be including a, what's called a lace stucco finish along the side elevations in the inset panels, which occur as you move down both of the long elevations and similarly on the other side. It's in reference to kind of the rusticated base, those popularized at the turn of the century, and buildings of this small-rise type. As I said, this existing cork oak tree is something that our clients prized about the site when they purchased it, and it's something that's important to the success of this building. And it's also something that was voiced to us in our initial outreach meeting with the neighbors. The health and longevity of this tree is, I think, important to the community at large. I think in your packet, there should have been a letter from our arborists who brought in and gave recommendations about how we can ensure its health and well-being. In addition to that concern, the other primary one was that the building was too tall. At the time, our initial proposal was one story taller. If you step the rear, from the rear property, back 10 more feet, you can actually go up to 50 feet. That's what our initial proposal was. And after talking it out with them, taking that information back to our clients, we came to the understanding and conclusion that it was in not only best interest for the community but for the design itself, that we reduce the height of the building and reduce the perceived mass. That's why we also voluntarily pushed in the front floor of the top elevation of the front, top floor of the front. So I guess, and thanks for the feedback, everybody, it really has made this project much better, and we feel much more successful. Thanks.
Oh, really quickly, does anybody have any questions for the applicant at this time?
No.
No? Scott?
No.
Jesse? I do have one question. For the two retail spaces, I notice they're pretty small in square footage. What do you envision going there?
We're not sure yet. The reason that there are two retail spaces is that if you do one large retail space, it triggers additional parking in the garage below, and we just couldn't actually meet that on this property size. So we're not entirely sure. We have, there are some suitors, but we don't know who it will exactly be yet.
Okay. And, okay, that was my only question for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We've heard from the staff and from the applicant, and so I'd like to go ahead and start a public comment. I have, I believe, seven speaker forms up here. If anybody else chooses to speak, just please bring a speaker form up. And we're going to go ahead and start with Brad Sorenson. Please come to the microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Brad Sorenson, 21 years at 913 Walnut, where a couple houses north of the project site. My main concern, I think, is setting a precedent on that side of Laurel as far as privacy for the Walnut Street yards go. And I realize the structure is set-back, but when folks are out on their patios looking down at our yards, it's a little, not intimidating, but I think it interrupts with our privacy a bit if we're out working the yard or sitting on our own decks. And I'm wondering if there's some way to essentially keep the building at two stories so we would feel a little more privacy in our backyards. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. And Inez?
I can have the floor to Mary.
Okay. Okay, great. Larry, would you like to come up?
Thanks.
I'm Larry Vanderveen. We live at 929 Walnut. We've been there 25 years. I'm going to need more than a couple of minutes, because we haven't had 18 months to maneuver around in the planning department.
That's okay, it sounds like Inez gave you some time, so.
I'm representing the petition, which you all, I don't know, have seen. It was submitted to you in February of 2013, and it was not apparently considered as part of your recommendation. So I want to make sure you hear it now. It's got 45 signatures on it, representing about 30 residents, most of whom are on Walnut and Laurel. We are adamant that the four particular issues that are described in the petition are not being satisfied by your review. We have an issue with three stories because of the line of sight drawing. May I use your drawing?
I showed you a drawing that has a line of sight cone. If you're standing inside the window, but if you're standing on the deck out here, you get a much larger angle. We think that that angle is sufficient that all but the last five feet of a lot can be viewed. I would suggest that you build scaffolding, go stand on it at that height and see for yourselves. So line of sight, three stories, really does impact our quality of life. It's intrusive. Secondly, we think that the precedence of building, a three-story building on Laurel will continue all the way down the block. So it doesn't impact just the three houses that are adjacent to this project, it impacts everybody. There's a letter provided in here from one of the property owners that says he intends to do the same thing. So we're looking at at least four more structures similarly. So we're worried about the impact of that precedence in our block, in the 1,000 block, and in the 1,100 block. I don't know if you've ever tried to park on Walnut Street, but it's not possible to do so during the daytime. We think that the underground parking, if it's going to be restricted to use by tenants and one commercial spot, will simply exacerbate the parking problem on Laurel, which it does every business day. So the more commercial property that's built on that side of Wall, the more parking we have on Walnut. Very simple. We also think that the standard that you describe in your municipal code section is not being met, in particular as it pertains to LU8.11 discouraging the abrupt changes in building scale. In that block, even in the multi-use space across the street from this site, it's only a two-story multi-use, I believe. You're asking to put a three-story multi-use where there isn't one now. There is no three-story all the way from the 900 block, 1000 block, and 1,100 block of Laurel. There's some two-story, no three-story. We think that the three-story is a precedence that we absolutely do not want to have in our neighborhood. It's that simple. And finally, we have a real concern about flooding. Every year, our street in particular gets flooded. If you can imagine, now there's five properties like this, each digging down 15 feet and putting in a concrete wall for the parking, it's a 40-foot wall, five properties wide, that's going to mess up the water table and the flow. The water table, even though your plan says it's in the vicinity of, it's typically 10 feet, when we dug our pool, it was seven and a half feet. If the water pool table's at seven and a half feet, we're very concerned about the depth of 15 feet in concrete. We don't know the impact of that in flooding. I think you all know that we have a flooding problem on that street, and it's been there for, ever since we've moved in. The houses that are adjacent to this project are exactly the ones that get flooded every year. 929, 925?
Would you?
So I don't think proper attention has been paid to the flooding issue at all. The notion that these structures are going to be there with these underground concrete parking lots suggests that the water table's going to be messed up in some way, and the drainage won't happen. That's really all I have to say at the moment.
Thank you, Larry.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing.
Oh, sure.
When we turned in the petition, there were 21 signatures for 30 addresses. I have another 14 signatures that I brought tonight for another 11 addresses. So should I give them to me?
Yes. Thank you, Larry.
Through the chair, could I ask staff to address the flooding issue?
Sure.
I know with Pacific hacienda, they actually have to have a pump going at all times because of the water table. Can you address the flooding for this particular project here?
I think Jill's looking for the evaluation. Can we come back to Jill? Okay. Great. No, I highlighted that, too. Good question. Can we have Marge Boots?
Thank you. My name is Marge Boots, and I live at 925, or 920 Walnut Street, and I've lived there for 25 years. I just want to add to the idea, my comment to the water table situation. I cannot, I think there's some sort of an Artesian well underneath that region, because there's so much water that just seeps up from the ground, it's just incredible. So it's, we're getting all the runoff from up above us, and to block it off even further, it's just going to be a disaster through that house. My house is very old, and so there's an old cistern there, and there's sumps, and I siphon up, I cannot tell you how, that intermittent duty of that sump pump is not intermittent, it's constant duty, all throughout the day, just cycling through water that I get in my property that just comes down and sieves through the land. So there's just incredible water going through, and I'm on the north side going to the next, and I'm right in front of the property that is proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have Virginia Duran?
Well, I just want to address the flooding problem, and I'm very nervous. I live at 921 Walnut Street. I'm directly behind the project that's being spoken about tonight. And I have now, my house has a cellar, and in that cellar, I have to have a sump pump. And when it rains and when the flooding occurs there, that sump pump is going constantly. I have, more than once, had at least 12 feet of water in my whole entire yard from the flooding. That's how serious the flooding is. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Michael Kelly.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Kelly. I represent the Kelly family. We've owned the property or been the family, the property's been the family since 1964. Want to validate, number one, the flooding issue. Currently, we have a tenant, we live at 925, or the property we own is 925 Walnut Street. Last few years with the rain, we've definitely had issues with the flooding. We've had to reimburse tenants that live there due to flood damage into the garage, into the small house that resides right by the property line, so that is a concern. The second concern would be in terms of the parking. We understand that with the additional resident, or the additional commercial space, parking is a problem, and based on the square footage, that is going to create overflow. Want to know how the city is willing to handle the overflow. There is no parking on Walnut Street during the evening, or during the day, and obviously with the complex here, the design is to have a destination point, and that's going to just add additional traffic in the evening. I do want to comment on the architect, that it's beautiful, I'd love to live there, but as, in all of the detail to the surrounding areas, we do appreciate that. The other concern would be in terms of the actual property value, based on research from Keller Williams as well as Elaine Pennell, National Association of Realty from 2006 to 2011. Properties that share a property line with a multi-use Properties that share a property line with multi-use properties suffer a decrease in property value of about 2%. And then the appreciation is about 2% versus 5% on the median. I want to know how the stakeholders of the new property development are going to address that issue. And that is my concerns.
Thank you. Margaret?
Hello, I'm Margaret Pye. I live at 926 Laurel Street. In the lower right-hand corner, the little window that you see, that's my dining room window. I've lived there 19 years. And as you can tell, if you can imagine living in that house with nothing next to you large for 19 years, and then suddenly having that building proposed that close to the property line, I thought it was eight feet, but what I saw in the report here is it's like seven feet. Right behind my dining room is my kitchen. One of the nicest aspects of my house is the nice, big, sunny kitchen window. I will never, ever have sunlight in my kitchen ever again because of the direction that this is. I had asked the developer if they could provide us with some mitigation, a skylight for our kitchen, and they were not able to provide any mitigation for us. So I have concern about the loss of my quality of living, of not having my sunlight in my kitchen anymore, but also, as the other gentleman mentioned, the property value will be decreased by not having anything substantial with sky to look out the window at. Also, I have concern about the construction. That's going to be so close to my house, I worry about dust. I worry about vibration. How can I be assured that this construction and all the digging to get all that dirt out is not going to damage the foundation of my house? And what would be my recourse if I do find structural damage to the foundation in conjunction with this construction project going on? I'm also wondering if there's any precedent being set on this that would preclude me from doing, either allow me or preclude me from doing something with my property sometime in the future. Could I demolish my house and build a similar project? And that would upset the people on Walnut Street. And, you know, and then there's two more houses north of mine. So will those property owners also be able to do that? I'm sure that's the concern of the Walnut Street residents. In addition to the construction and vibration that I'm concerned about is, we have, like I said, we've lived there 19 years. The lot has been vacant for about 14 of those 19 years. So we have been planting at our expense various trees all along the property line. What if the construction damages our trees that we've invested a lot of money in planting? What's our recourse for that? Also, we put up the fence that currently sits between our two properties. And what if the construction damages the fence? Will they repair that? Will they, will there be any recourse for us on that? And other things that I can't even imagine, like the flooding issue. We have flooding in our, on our property as well. But other things like when something this large is being built this close to our house, what if something falls off and hits the roof of our house and causes damage there? What's our recourse for that type of thing? And I work full-time, but my husband's retired, and I, he wasn't able to come tonight. But I feel sorry for him spending days in that house for however many months this construction project is going to go on with the noise and the dust and the disturbance. So I have a lot of concerns about this. And I think possibly the gentleman that's circulating the petition, he might have come up with a good plan to make it two stories rather than three stories. I think that might mitigate a lot of the concerns that a lot of us have. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Inez, did you have anything to add?
Yes, my name is Inez. And my main concern is that we use our backyard a lot. And we are completely going to lose our privacy back there because from that balcony, anybody can stand there and just stare at our backyard all day long. Also, that's my main concern, is our quality of life will decrease.
Thank you.
May I just say one more thing? Is that okay?
If you can come up to microphone. Thank you.
I wanted to put something on the record I forgot to say. With regard to the dirt hauling, I think you should postpone it until you've decided, and then you should give us enough time to react to your decision and litigate if we want to with regard to hauling the dirt, in particular as it pertains to the concerns about flood. So if you don't address that completely, we'd like to have some recourse on that.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, seeing no other speaker cards, I would like a motion to close public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was planning on addressing the flooding, but not.
Right. I was planning on, do I need to keep public hearing open to address this? Okay, I'm sorry, then I'll keep those open. Yes, please. Jill, do you have, do you have what's needed to address the concerns?
Yes, I was just going to say that Public Works did review these plans and issued a recommended set of conditions of approval. And one of them is that the applicant must submit a detailed drainage plan prepared by a licensed civil engineer. And then also that the applicant shall provide capacity calculations showing safe conveyance of all site drainage. So I'd like to defer to the civil engineer to better explain those if I can.
Great. Can I have the civil engineer come up? Thank you. And what's your name?
My name is Travis Lutz, project civil engineer. And I just want to discuss a little bit about the drainage. And that is the city would require that, you know, all drainage is handled just like it had been. We're not allowed to change or alter the existing drainage patterns. So that being said, for this project, we wouldn't be able to change, you know, everything's going from, towards the bay at this point, going from Laurel towards the bay. We would certainly not be able to allow any water to cross back towards the back property line at all. So I don't see increasing the amount of water there. As far as the groundwater table, yeah, we have some reports that say it could very, as little as six feet. So we are anticipating a very shallow groundwater table. Groundwater table is very likely to fluctuate up and down, but typically it doesn't fluctuate very significantly horizontally. So that's why a lot of underground tanks that leak kerosene and solvents, it takes literally decades for that to travel hundreds of feet. So the horizontal traveling of groundwater table is not something I would, I would think would be adversely affected either. So that being said, I think that's why the city staff has determined that the project would not adversely affect the adjacent properties from a drainage perspective. And that is, you know, we'd be connecting all of our downsides. That would actually have to go onto Laurel property. And we would not be able to increase the amount of water leaving the site based on the pre-existing conditions. That would be the hydraulic calculations that the city would require as well.
Do they have any questions for the civil engineer at this point?
If the water is flowing from the west to the east, and you put a concrete wall across there.
Surface flow, correct? I mean, because the groundwater table isn't just constantly bleeding into the ocean, right?
Well, if the surface, if the water table is six feet down, right? Help me understand this, okay? And you essentially sink a garage that's going to be 12 to 15 feet below ground?
Right.
And now, if the water is flowing from west to east, okay?
It's surface water going from west to east.
So the water underneath is not flowing towards the bay at all?
I mean, it's, yeah.
At six feet?
It's fluctuating directionally towards the bay at hundreds of feet per decade, yet, yes.
So there's no flow towards the bay, is what you're saying?
I didn't, I didn't say there was no flow towards the bay. I said the horizontal flow of groundwater table is very small, yes. And that's again, why when gasoline tanks are contaminated and then they've been leaking solvents into the groundwater table, that's why we're able to go in and mitigate those sites and remove the contaminated area because it hasn't contaminated the entire groundwater table, or else we'd all be devastated by that.
Any other questions? Thank you. And then you had another question for Jill, did you not? Or was that already addressed, Scott?
Flooded plan.
Flooded plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. I have another speaker, Sharam Imami. Did I say that right?
It's Sharam.
Sharam, thank you. Come on up.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sharam Imami. I'm the owner of the property at 935 Walnut Street. I've lived there since the year 2000. The approval of the three-story building at 934 Laurel Street would not only violate the privacy rights of all the residential properties on Walnut Street, which are adjacent to the Laurel Street, but it sets a bad precedence for all the future proposal on adjacent lots in Laurel. As was mentioned by Larry before, as it is already, we have a parking problem on Walnut Street during the week. Also, it was mentioned that our property values are going to depreciate, and there's been no discussion of how we can get compensated for that. And I believe that there should be clear demarcation between commercial zones and residential zones. If you approve this proposal, would you also approve a proposal if I, if I bring a proposal and say, you know, why not build a three-story building on Walnut Street? Because I'm right adjacent to these guys. I mean, where does it actually end? So I therefore ask the city council not to approve the proposal for the three-story building at 934 Laurel Street. I don't have any problem with building a two-story building, but I think three-story building, it really violates the privacy of all the adjacent lots. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a point of information to make sure I'm doing this procedurally correct. If we have questions that were brought up by public comment, can we, do we raise them now, or do we close public comment and then have a conversation up here?
Good evening. Valerie Armento, city attorney substituting for Mr. Rubens, whose law firm is located across the street and therefore is conflicted out. You should take all testimony with the public hearing open, and then close the public hearing when you're ready to have just a discussion among the commissioners.
Great, thank you. Then really quickly, before we close public hearing, many times the residents had brought up privacy rights and privacy concerns. And I know that many residents in St. Carlos are not familiar with, with our, I guess, I guess our policy zoning as far as privacy. So could you give some clarification on that? I mean, as I understand, we don't really have a right to privacy. Am I correct, am I correct about that?
Yes, I guess you could say that the development standards together as a whole, they provide direction for how buildings should be oriented and situated on the site. With design review, we're not only looking at the massing of the building, its orientation, placement requirements for parking, but landscaping too. So you consider everything in total. And I know that oftentimes landscaping is utilized to address privacy concerns. But you are correct that we don't have specific development standards to address the visibility from one neighbor to the next neighbor. But it's just, we don't have development standards for that.
Right. Thank you. Really, if you want to get up and speak briefly, but it's, not from, not from the audience, I'm sorry. That's why I was asking for a mention.
Simple question. How tall can fences be?
Through the chair. How tall can fences be?
It's, they're six feet, and you can do an additional one foot of lattice. That's our typical standard. I know that in other zones, for example, in commercial zones, I think there is some latitude to extend the height, but in residential areas, it's typically six feet with one foot of lattice.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Larry. This really is going to be the last exception, then we're going to close public hearing, but thank you.
Two quick questions. Number one is how large are the trees that are going to be planted at the new location? And second, I would like to request a potential independent audit or second opinion on the civil engineering. I was very unimpressed with the response due to the flooding. And that is going to be a major issue with the property, seeing how that we are downwind of all water.
Thank you. Can you address how large the other back tree is? How large is the existing cork?
It's approximately 45.
Forty-five? And how large will the other back trees be? Please come up.
Okay, it looks like the pistachio is starting from a 24-inch box.
It's the size of the box that the tree comes in. It doesn't tell you the height of the tree.
I see. Okay. Thank you. That's the answer we have. All right. Thank you all very much for the information, the testimony. I would like to now entertain a motion to close public hearing so we can deliberate.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Scott, why don't we go ahead and start with you? You're on the end now, so.
I was hoping you'd start with.
Would you rather me start the other way?
Yeah. Start with Scott. Go ahead. Start with Scott. Start with Scott. Okay.
I can start with David. I don't care.
I don't care either. I mean, my, my major question is a legal one. I'm trying to understand what I, what I need to actually find. I mean, to be frank, I look at the, at the design review criteria, and I look at policy LU 8.19, LU 8.11, as well as design criteria D and E, and I just don't see how I can possibly find them. So I guess my question is, do I actually need to find that this is compatible with the neighborhood behind in order to approve it? And I guess there's, this is an interplay with the earlier comments about the, the development standards. If the development standards are met, does that mean that these, that these, that this project is, is meeting the design criteria as well? Is that, I mean, is that what you're saying? I'm just wondering, are the design criteria and the development standards two different things? Because that's my understanding.
Yeah, I'll let Valerie respond to that. But what I, what I can state is that the development standards that we went through in the presentation, particularly with respect to height and then setbacks, as you recall, that the numerical limitations were more generous for a project in a mixed-use neighborhood zone if it were not next to RS. The zoning ordinance provides stricter limitations when a project is adjacent to a residential, an RS zoning district. So you have MUN on one side and RS on the other side. They're facing each other on, you know, with separate streets with different intentions, and the zoning ordinance contemplates that. So the development standards are intended to address those transitional aspects, and the design review criteria D, I believe, simply repeats that intention.
So is it, I mean, is it your view that if the development standards are met, then the design criteria are met?
That is why staff is recommending approval, because those, the trends, the development standards that require greater setback and reduce height limitations when adjacent to RS district meet the intent of that criteria. So that is what staff is basing its analysis upon, and why we find that we can make, that's why we're offering recommendation, a recommendation of this project.
And is that true of the, the policy LU 8.19 and LU 8.11? That those are also satisfied if the, if the development standards are met? I mean, so, and let me take it out of the abstract. So, policy LU 8.19 says residential structures shall be designed to be compatible with existing structures in the vicinity. Avoid obstructing views from adjacent structures or views of community importance. Avoid interference with the right or ability to use solar energy and be consistent with community design principles. Let's say, for instance, the, the policy, excuse me, the home that's immediately adjacent to this project at, I guess it's 928, is it, or?
To the north.
The one directly to the north? Yeah, Margaret's? 926. If 926 wanted to put solar panels on its roof, presumably it now can't because this building is next to it. I mean, is that a problem?
Yes, if the, if the neighbor had solar panels on their home, and they relied on that, and the, and the project was coming in with a generous amount of landscaping that is going to prevent sunlight. sunlight from, you know, shining onto those solar panels, this would be something we could take into consideration and maybe suggest an alteration to their landscape plan so that the adjacent owner can utilize those solar panels as originally envisioned.
So, I mean, I don't, I'm trying not to play gotcha here, but then it sounds like what your answer means is that meeting the development standards doesn't mean that they've met these, that they've satisfied these policies? Ultimately, we can look, this building clearly meets the development standards.
I would say that the general plan policy, the general plan has numerous policies, as we all know, and not every policy is directly, I mean, sometimes you find policies that may be, I don't want to use the word in conflict with each other, but they don't line up perfectly. Policies are intended to guide the decision-making process, so whenever there's a question, say for example about the solar panels, the decision-making body could rely on a general plan policy to acquire a condition that maybe some other kind of tree be planted or not be planted next to the solar panels. However, with the zoning ordinance, with the development standards, those are requirements that shall be met. So policies are what a decision-making body would use to make, require certain conditions, or development standards, they need to be met. They either are met or they're not, or they're asking for a variance for a very good reason.
Well, so what if, I mean, what if I conclude factually? Because I mean, I went and I looked at the houses on Walnut. Most of them are one-story. I'd say two-thirds look like they're one-story and one-third look like they're two-story. And I look at them and I say, a three-story building is not a gradual transition to those one-story houses. If I conclude that, does that mean I conclude that this project is inconsistent with the policy and therefore has to be, cannot be approved?
Well, staff would rely on the development standards. Again, sorry to repeat myself, but the rear yard setback going from zero to be required at 30 feet, you know, so you can do zero, but when you're next to RS, you need to go back a minimum of 30 feet. So that addresses the requirements for buffering and creating a transition so that you don't have two buildings next to each other that are, you know, out of scale, if you will. Now, the RS zoning district does allow for two stories. And the MUN allows for four. So, in consideration of that, in conjunction with the generous setbacks or the setbacks that are required for these areas of transition, we feel that it is consistent with the general plan and does meet, obviously does meet the standards as outlined in the zoning ordinance.
And if I could expand a little, the provisions in the municipal code that relate to design review, the introductory provisions with regard to the purpose clearly state that one of the purposes of design review is to ensure that development will be compatible with not only existing but with potential new development. So, building on what was said previously, you have an area that the zoning allows four stories in the neighborhood, and you.
MUN.
MUN, sorry. And you have two stories allowed in the adjacent residential. Also, you have at the introduction to all of these design criteria listings, it talks about obtaining design review approval has to satisfy the criteria to the extent that they apply. So if the City Council has determined that you have two zoning districts that are different but compatible to some degree because they're adjacent to each other, you have to factor that into your decision-making.
Can I step in here for one thing? So when you look at policy LU 8.11, and the way you were expressing this was looking at the residential neighborhood behind the proposed building as being 30 feet away and there are all these design guidelines for how far that needs to be away, yet on either side of this project are single-family homes, okay? Within the same district. So, I'm sort of trying to figure out, I can begin to see how you get to it between the districts, okay? But I don't see how you get to it with single-family homes on either side of this building. How do you get around the, discourage the abrupt changes in building scale?
The properties sharing either side, you know, fronting onto Laurel are all part of the MUN zoning district. And this area, through the general plan update, was identified as an area that has a potential to change over the next 10, 20 years through the life of the general plan, and it was therefore zoned accordingly. It has a land use designation of mixed use and then a zoning designation that adheres to that overarching general plan land use designation. So, in the ordinance, zoning ordinance, the side yard setbacks could be zero. I believe there are no transitional development standards for the side yard setbacks, they could just be zero. And the applicant, in response to the existing, and maybe they can explain this better than I, has chosen to provide some degree of side yard setbacks with landscaping within those setback areas to serve as a buffer between the two properties. So, in regards to the requirements of the ordinance and thinking about overall site design and compatibility with existing environs, staff finds that that is not an objectionable response of the project.
Quickly, Scott, you were on the general plan committee.
I was on the general plan.
Okay, because the same, I think the same concerns, I actually see all three of us have the same thing circled around the disruption of scale.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if that was the intent of the committee for the 900 block of Laurel, to not be single-story, single-family homes 30 years from now?
The intent was to transition to mixed use, okay?
Okay.
But the intent of the general plan, and it's stated in LU 8.2 where it's sensitive to the character of the adjacent structures in the immediate neighborhood. In LU 8.4, it says, at the end, it says, sensitive to the inner relationships of surrounding uses and structures, especially residential. And you see the same thing in LU 8.11 where it's discourage abrupt changes in building scale. And LU 8.19, residential structures shall be designed to be compatible with existing structures in the vicinity, okay? In every single case, as part of the general plan, we put that in there multiple, multiple times because we understood that the most important thing is how you transition from building to building. And it seems to me that this is a situation where we have a concern, and I've heard it at least from one other commissioner and a hint at it from a third, is that we seem to have a problem finding that this transition is appropriate at this location.
Well, certainly, this is the process of design review and, you know, obviously the commission will make its determination tonight, but I, you know, it's probably obvious to everyone that it's hard for a project to be the first one in on the block. There haven't been any projects, I believe, proposed for this block, which is intended, again, to be that transitional area and to change over the course of time. And they're the first one in, and it's long been a vacant site, so it is very, very apparent that is true. But again, given the fact that these properties could change over time, if there were two or three-story buildings already built, it's a little bit easier for a project like this, of course, to come in, so.
And I was part of the planning commission for the building that was shown further down on Laurel Street where 15, yes, and so was Angela. And the difference between that building and this particular building here was the fact that that building was surrounded by other two-story buildings, and so it was relatively easy to put a three-story building in between them. From where I look at this project here is, I sort of go in two directions. One is, we look at it and we say, it just doesn't work, okay? The second is, we look at it and we go, okay, we have some problems with it, but what would it take to make this project work on this site? How do we begin to address the neighbors' concerns? And so, we can go in either direction here, but I just want to say that I do have quite a few concerns with this, and I'm happy to try and work them out.
Jesse?
Well, I think, I'm looking at your notes and I'm looking at my notes, I think everybody marked LU 8.2, LU 8.11, so obviously there is a clear distinction that we all have issues.
Does anybody up here have any additional issues beyond the scale?
I got lots of issues. I got lots of issues I'd like to address, and I can begin to go down through those things if we decide that that's the direction we want to go. We want to make this project capable of being approved.
Okay.
And, you know, I can start listing some of those conditions.
Well, let me go ahead and ask that of the other two. David, is that where you're leaning of making this a project that can be approved?
I just don't know how. I mean, I've been, I mean, I thought, well, you could just remove the balcony on the back. It's a beautiful building. I mean, I want to say it's an absolutely gorgeous, gorgeous building. To echo the gentleman, I mean, I would love to live there too. But I just, it is, it is so out of proportion to the houses on either side and the houses behind it, with the exception of one massive house on Walnut. Whoever's house that is, is also.
929 Walnut, whoever that is.
Also not particularly fitting with the rest of the street, the house on Walnut, but.
We all walk the streets today, apparently, yeah.
It, I mean, it's just so out of proportion. I don't, I don't know how, and the oak tree, I mean, I'm ignorant of trees, but aren't oaks deciduous? I mean, so presumably, you know, for most of the winter, there's not going to be any foliage. But, I don't know. It doesn't really, I don't know. I'm willing to entertain. I'm not willing to say there's no circumstances in which I could ever approve a project that is remotely like this one. But I just, I cannot come up with anything to do it.
Jesse, where are you at?
Well, a couple things. One, I just got, I have some random questions, actually, just as this all is going. Length of time for, one of the things that keeps on jumping out to me is this, the excavation. It's quite a bit of excavation. I mean, how long does that take for that much dirt and that much grading in that?
A week.
A week? Is there any example of a under 6,000 square foot lot that has below-grade parking in the city of San Carlos? Because I've never, ever seen that.
Not that I can think of, actually.
The commercial parking, while I know that it's not required, the architect kind of hit the point as to how they kind of got around that, it's a problem down there, whether it's a requirement or not. I mean, I'm just talking, I understand you've met the criteria, but I drive past that location at least six times a day, and it doesn't matter what hour of the day is. There's usually no parking or there's a traffic jam because it's a four-way stop there. So, I don't know what kind of, I mean, 1001 Laurel is a good example of how long it took to get, you know, tenants there. It's still an issue whether or not it doesn't need to be met on a criteria. So I'm just kind of speaking out of turn there.
So, to Scott's question, are you interested in looking to find ways to approve this project?
I think that, I think the scale has to be brought down. I mean, that's the only thing, because of the transition, and I think we were, staff had mentioned something about RS to MUN to MUSB in forms of the, the development standards are obviously, MUSB is much greater, but the MUSB is across the street, and if you look at the buildings even across the street, they're not as big as this one is, so.
I'm sorry, is that true? Are the buildings across the street small?
I believe the project, the one that's painted yellowish-orange-ish color.
Yeah, the pretty color, yeah.
939. I believe that is a three-story. Did you, people are nodding, yeah, the third story is kind of minimized, but it is actually three stories.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, exactly. It's staggered, it's only a few units that actually are quite, you know, through level, so.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
So that was my, those are more comments, some questions, but.
I think I'm probably the outlier on this then, even though I do have the similar concerns about the scale and proportion to the single-story houses slinking either side. I see the zoning in this particular block as this building meeting the intention of what the MUN district should be and what this part of Laurel should be, and perhaps, perhaps I'm going to get in some trouble for saying this, it seems to me that the building fits the overall character of Laurel, but it's the single-family homes that don't fit. However, I know, good thing I'm not running for anything. However, is that what we're directly supposed to be looking at when we look at adjacent properties? I don't know. So my inclination is to say that this, this seems to fit in with where we want Laurel to go, and I am inclined to try to find a way to make the findings. So I guess that puts me as a little bit of an outlier here, but that's where I stand.
I'm willing to go either direction. I just, I have a fairly long list of things that I would like to have addressed.
Okay.
Why don't we start with that list?
So, right from the beginning, I still have a concern about the drainage plan and the impact to the other properties. That was something that was on my list from the beginning. I think that, although the civil engineer stood up and talked, it doesn't necessarily make sense to me what, that the, putting that underground parking garage there won't have an impact on the surrounding properties. And I would want to see how that is addressed, and I would prefer to see that, how that is addressed prior to me approving the project, okay? So I'd like to understand how that is addressed. I vaguely remember how it was addressed with Pacific hacienda, but I know they have pumps going 24 hours a day pumping water out from around that. Let's see, I have a bit of an issue with the back of the project. It's beautiful. The problem is that it's designed to look at the neighborhood, okay? And I counted, I think, 11 or 12 windows. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so there's 10 very large windows looking back at the neighborhood, okay? I have less of an issue with the ones on the first floor. The ones on the second floor, I have a much bigger issue with, and the ones on the third floor are really an issue for me. third floor are, are really an issue for me. And the balcony on the back is an issue for me also, because all of those are concerns that directly relate to the neighborhood. And I really like what you've done with the front. I like that you've put the balcony on the front, because I think the buildings that are facing Laurel Street should be geared towards Laurel Street. The idea of this transition zone is to bring those buildings and make them part of Laurel Street and minimize their impact to the neighborhood. And I think you've tried to maximize the impact to Laurel Street and maximize the impact to the neighborhood. So somehow the back of that building needs to be minimized, whether it's higher-up windows that, you know, people aren't looking out. The balcony, I, I have an issue with. I'd like to see a better landscaping plan. A 24-inch box pistache, I put one in front of my house. It's 10 years old. It's 20 feet high. Okay? So when I look at that, I go, they're going to wait 20 years, I mean, 10 years, and it's going to be 20 feet high, and it may block the second-story windows. So I think that, from my concern is, you need to either start with a larger tree, or one that's going to be fast-growing, and, and fill in that space sooner rather than later. I want to make sure that, that you don't just minimize the impact to the buildings right behind, but sort of onto the sides also, so that if you just put two trees in the back, and then you sort of put trees along the side, you're sort of missing the, all the rest of the neighborhood that's out there. And, and many of them here tonight had concerns, and so I think that there has to be additional landscaping. And landscaping is probably the primary way that we buffer buildings from each other and.
Privacy concerns.
Privacy concerns. We normally address those through landscaping. Let's see, what else? I have a problem with the, the parking. There is no parking for guests. There is no customer parking. I, I can't imagine that we are going to build a building and, and have, and assume that these people are never going to have anybody come and visit them, and that there are not going to be any customers to come to visit the, the, the businesses that are in there. I understand that we don't, we, you aren't required to have parking spaces by, and you're getting around that by, by having smaller things. You're still going to have customers, and parking is an issue, and, and I'm going to ask about parking later when, when we have our, our sort of talking commissioners' questions. I have some concern about the, the light fixtures and how they may potentially spill over into the neighboring yards. I've, I've just seen a building where, the building was supposed to have lights that shine down, and the lights shine the whole side of the building. And so, I have a, I have a question about the, the lighting for that particular building. And the parking impact on the residential neighborhood is, is another issue. We're getting to a point where, unfortunately, we need to think about permit parking, and, and we're thinking about it in, and as a suggestion in other parts of the city, and right now, there's, there's a huge impact to your neighborhood, and it's not going to get any less. It's only going to get worse, the more buildings they put in. And the plan along Laurel Street is to put more of these buildings in. And so, this is the first one, and I think if we set the precedent right, then the other buildings that come in along there can be done very well, and can minimize the impact to the residents back there. And the developers can have what they want, which is, they want that third story. Okay? And the question is, how do you go about doing that and minimizing the impact on the residents there? Bike parking. I didn't see any bike parking out front, and I, I read the little thing about no bike parking, and I thought, okay, no parking for customers, no parking for guests, and you can't even.
There's bike parking in the garage.
But, I assumed that was for the residents.
I see what you mean. Okay.
So there's no, the, people can't even ride their bike to the business. Okay? They've got to walk to the business. And I think that it's nice that we're encouraging people to walk to the business, but it's just not realistic in San Carlos to expect that everybody's going to walk up. I had, and I'll keep going here, because I told you I had a long list. The balconies on the sides, again, I, I like the balcony that was set in. Okay? I, I thought that was very well done. The balconies that stick out on the side there, again, that's sort of a privacy issue, and the fact that there's no, you're, you're looking down on, on a neighborhood, and, and so that, that was one more issue. And then the last issue I had actually sort of concerns staff and the dirt hall permit. And I know we are looking at a dirt hall permit that takes the soil right down Holly Street, but I think if we can try and do dirt hall permits that actually go out to El Camino, go down Britton, and then down Industrial, we won't actually be hauling all of that dirt right in front of residential homes. And so, if there's a way we can consider in the future, dirt hall permits that don't run directly through residential neighborhoods, that would be very much appreciated by the individuals that live on Holly Street. And I think I'll stop there.
So, just to clarify, these are the issues that you would need addressed to be comfortable approving the project?
Yeah. I got one more.
Okay.
So, the other concern.
Trying to get us through.
Yeah, that's okay. No, I, and, and I'm not sure we can do it all tonight.
Right, right.
But I, I would like to hear some of these. The other concern that I have is this parking that goes down in underneath, and we saw this same type of parking plan with Wheeler Plaza, or the, the EIR for Wheeler Plaza. And one of the concerns we had was that when you come up out of that, you really can't see the individuals on the sidewalk very well. And so, there was some kind of sign that we were talking about that would inform the, the individuals who are walking along the sidewalk, there was a vehicle coming up out of, out of the garage. So, again, that's another issue that I think will somehow need to be addressed because of the slant of that, and because of, at least on one side, there's a fence, and, and, you know, we're creating the same type of problem that we have between the bank and the 600 block of Laurel.
Yeah, I know what you mean. Thank you, Scott. David, is there, are there any mitigations or anything you can think of that would allow you to reconcile this for approval?
Well, I mean, it seems kind of irrelevant today, because Scott can't vote for it as it is right now. I can't vote for it as it is right now, and I don't think we're going to get it resolved tonight.
Is there anything you'd like to direct the staff to bring back as far as information that can help you make a determination?
Mine is, my concerns are primarily, I don't, I didn't have a, I mean, I think that parking is a concern, but I, the zoning, I mean, the reg, this is consistent with the regulations, so, I mean, although it's a problem, it seems like it's more of a problem with the regulations than it is with the project.
Right.
You know, as far as the, you know, to, to give the, the civil engineer some credit, I understood what he was saying. Maybe I was the only one. You know, I, I have to defer to a civil engineer. I'm not a civil engineer. If he's saying that, that they, that they have to deal with the water, I'm assuming they're going to deal with the water. My concern primarily is that this memo says I have to make findings that this fits. And I, as of right now, I can't make findings that it fits, because I don't, I don't think it fits.
Fair enough. All right? Fair enough. Jesse?
Exactly what you said, right there.
Ditto. Okay. Um, okay. Well, since it sounds like, then, that at least three of us can't make the findings, I did want to address one quick thing, only that you had mentioned parking, and I know many of the residents had also mentioned parking on Walnut, and I, I do happen to be on the downtown parking study commission, and they did study the area, particularly in your neighborhood, and of course, not that you're surprised, there is a parking problem. It is highlighted in red right there on Walnut. But I just did want to, want to let you know that, I know that that is something that the committee is working on as far as.
Solutions.
As far as solutions for, not just, just that particular block, but many of the blocks that have parking issues, that that is something that the city is truly addressing and that we're in the middle of, so I just wanted to make that comment. Okay, so, I guess, how do we proceed from here, then? I, I don't know that we would make a motion, because at this point, a motion would.
The, one way to do it would be to move to continue the public hearing.
Continue, that's what I was thinking. Would, would we move to continue, and then with some direction to the staff to give some more information?
That's correct. The commission can make the motion that this item should be continued.
Great.
And the commission can also direct staff and the applicant to address some of the concerns that we heard tonight, if that's what the commission would like to see the applicant return back with at the continued hearing.
Great. Do you feel comfortable making that a motion to continue?
I think the question that we as a commission need to make is, are there at least three of us that feel that we would like to bring this back, or are, are there less than that who are, or are there three that don't want to bring it back? And want to, do we want to move forward, or do we not want to move forward with the project at all? That's the decision.
I would like to move forward with the project, and I'd like to find a way to, to make it work if possible. That does not mean it needs to be exactly the way it is here. I would like to see some.
Two separate questions, basically.
Right.
So, let me start with the first one. I will make a motion to continue the public hearing to a date uncertain.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. In that case, in that case, then, Scott, can I assume that you would like?
Answers?
Answers to the questions that you posed earlier, including.
Or solutions.
Answers or solutions, including the windows on the second and third floor, the balconies particularly flanking the backside of the property.
Staff has a list.
You have a list? Okay, great.
If we go any further, we're talking about it outside the public hearing.
Perfect. Okay.
Actually, do we have to reopen the public hearing before we do that? I think we may have closed the public hearing, in which case, we need to, I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing and continue it to a site, to a, a date uncertain, because I think otherwise, we won't have reopened the public hearing.
Correct, because we did close it. So can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. We'll go ahead and continue the public hearing at a date uncertain. Thank you, everybody. And, we are going to go ahead and move on, then, to item seven, unless I am making some big procedural error doing that, to reports, correspondence, and general information. Lisa, do we have any report from, on recent city council actions?
No, there's no, nothing from the planning division regarding any projects related to what we're doing over on our side with respect to council, to report back to the commission with.
Okay, thank you. Planning Commission, comments or reports? Does anybody have any comments or reports?
I'm hoping for a report on the parking study.
I do have that. Anybody else have any, anything other than the parking study? Okay, forgive me, I should have actually made copies that you guys could see this, and I will pass it around, so you guys can see what's been going on. But, as you know, I am on the downtown parking study committee, and they've held several meetings, well, they've held meetings publicly, and then one meeting with, of the committee to talk about what they've gleaned from public surveys, as well as the actual traffic study done by, excuse me, I want to say, TJMK Transportation Consultants. And, though I'm probably not the best to summarize this, I might let Lisa, Lisa do it, I would say that my, my assessment of the potential parking improvements seem to be really good, and I, there certainly is a challenge on certain, on certain blocks of Laurel and immediately surrounding, but I don't think the problem is necessarily is, as, I don't think the problem is something that we can't deal with pretty effectively, and I like the solutions that, that we're coming up with on the study. And maybe I'll let Lisa talk a little bit more about that.
Certainly. I don't have the data, the data and graphs in front of me, but I can share with the commission that this study included a presentation to the downtown merchants and to the community members of San Carlos. We had two meetings that were held. There were online surveys available, online, and we received a pretty healthy response back. We have over 250 forms received from members throughout the community that will be compiled into a report that will then go on to be presented to the city council. We had our meeting with the Parking Advisory Committee, and we shared the results of the, of the parking inventory. So the charge of the study, and some of you may already know this, but it was really to do a baseline analysis of existing conditions. So the charge was to inventory all of the parking downtown, on-street, off-street, public and private, and then to determine the level of occupancy. So, the occupancy levels have been identified, and as Angela mentioned, there are some areas in downtown where we know that there is a high level of occupancy, and areas that were adjacent are off of those streets, maybe just one or two blocks in, had less of a, of a parking, I guess you could say, a parking concern threshold. The, the, the threshold is actually 85%. So if there's 85% or more, or more of parking occupancy, that's a signal that, you know, there is a parking issue, and there may be some parking management, management strategies that a city may want to address. Anything less than 85% is considered to be, you know, a non-issue. You know, there could be, you know, take a little bit longer to get the exact spot you want, but that you will find a parking space. The next step includes a, a presentation to the Transportation and Circulation Commission. That'll be on Tuesday, August 20th, at 7:00 PM here in Council Chamber, so if anyone's interested in attending that, you can hear the presentation again. Following that, a draft study will be prepared and presented to the city council for its consideration on any types of solutions they may want to seek at this time. So this first phase of the study was really to get an assessment of what the current conditions are in the downtown. It's been, I guess, last done was in 1999, so things have changed. That downtown is, more and more new businesses are coming in, new projects are being developed, so it's a timely study to be done.
Thanks, Lisa.
Can I ask a quick question? When you say 85% essentially of capacity, are you looking at potential new projects? Are you looking at, for example, the, the plan along Laurel has always been to sort of develop the west side, and that's going to create additional parking constraints in that whole area? Have, have those things, or are those things? Have those things, or are those things going to be taken into consideration?
The- I can't speak for the consultant, because I don't have his expertise, but the 85% is of existing conditions. So, I think that probably answers your question. And it's, like you said, it's a moving number, because things change, and the number can fluctuate over time. But at least, we know what the situation is now with the amount of development that we currently have.
I think one of the things I found most interesting in- from the consultant's report is that the lot immediately behind- behind town is usually at threshold, but Wheeler Plaza isn't. And I don't know that, in several different times during the study, and I don't know that people know that. So, one of the potential parking improvement strategies, probably one of the first ones that needs to happen are wayfinding signs, and also some awareness of available parking. Otherwise, you get people circling and circling that lot behind town when they could just go up one more lot and have an easier time parking. That's not going to solve every problem, that's just one example of a potential issue, a potential solution. Also, some shared use of private lots was another solution that was mentioned, and the businesses collaborating for a Downtown Parking Improvement District was another potential solution, though there were also many more discussed.
They go way south on Laurel, so did they go all the way down to the end of Laurel?
Yeah, let me show you what the-
Just remember the Salt Pugs project that we had, that-
The parking-
The parking down there is really bad.
It goes south of Arroyo to Eaton.
Okay.
Yeah, and you guys, I'll pass this around, you're welcome to take a look at the whole thing, and this one is another copy you're welcome to take a look at.
Can I prepare one for colorblind people?
Yeah, no, if you're- or people that can't read very, very, very small print. Okay. Any other Planning Commission comments or reports?
Not for me.
Any correspondence? I noticed we had a bunch on our dais. Any additional correspondence?
No, the correspondence that came in concerning the public hearing item that we discussed tonight, those have all been provided to the commission. And certainly, any additional correspondence that comes in regarding this project will be submitted to the commission.
Thank you. And then, any additional planning staff comments, reports, or updates on current projects, Lisa?
Certainly. With respect to the Planning Commission appointment, as you know, we all have- we have one vacancy on the commission. It's my understanding that the city council will make their appointment on the 26th of this month, August 26th. The next hearing with the Planning Commission is scheduled for the 19th. However, at this point, the division doesn't have any projects that are ready to be scheduled for that particular night, so it's very likely that we could have a cancellation of the Planning Commission hearing of August 19th. The next hearing with the Planning Commission would actually occur on a Tuesday, which is September the 3rd, simply because the Monday is the Labor Day holiday, so the meeting has been pushed forward a day to Tuesday. So, most likely, the next time we'll all convene will be on Tuesday, September 3rd. We talked about the Downtown Parking Study, thank you Angela for that. The only thing that I was going to mention was that there's a meeting with the Transportation and Circulation Commission, again, August 20th, Council Chamber, 7:00 PM. A couple of projects that we do have coming up before the Planning Commission, as you might recall, is a new LED billboard at 800 Branston. Another project that we have coming before the commission is- involves two new tanks for Cal Water, and these are at 700 Crestview Drive and at 3372 Melendi Drive. This project is currently undergoing environmental review. That will be circulated for a period of 30 days, and then subsequently, we can schedule the public hearing with the commission. And then, lastly, we have received, I think it is, the city's first act- first application for a Mills Act contract, and this is in regards to historic properties that can apply for a contract with the city. And basically, what it does is it could potentially reduce the property taxes for the specific historic property in return for a commitment to upkeeping the property, the historic integrity of the property. So, they outline a 10-year program of improvements. It could be maintenance, it could be reconstruction or rehabilitation, but in exchange for getting that tax benefit, they will be committing to a certain number of improvements that they need to make for the property, and this is the first one that's being submitted. So, it will go to the Planning Commission, and then be ultimately either approved or approved by the city council.
What's the address?
What's the address on that?
It's 40 Pine Avenue.
40 Pine.
Okay, thank you, how exciting.
Yeah, and we do have a general plan policy for that, that we encourage that, so this will be our first win-in, so it's nice to see folks doing that. And I don't have anything else.
And Lisa, the Branston billboard is coming to us in September, right? Or we think?
Well, I don't think it's going to be coming forward in September. It's been put on hold pending some amendments to the municipal code that need to be resolved before it can proceed.
Great, thank you.
At some point, we talked about updating the zoning, or looking at potential amendments to the zoning ordinance. Is that coming forward at some point?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. There is, as you might expect, with the adoption of an entirely new zoning ordinance, there is some fine tuning that needs to be made along the way. And staff has been doing a very good job, which happens while they review projects. We notice certain things that need to be cleaned up. So, we have a list of items that we will be bringing before the Planning Commission. Our goal is to do that before the end of the year, but as you know, we have a lot of things on our plate, so we'll see in terms of what comes before the other, but we are actively working on that, and that'll come before the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else?
RDRC meetings, are we going to have any more this year?
I'm sure you will.
We have a number. In fact, that tends to be our highest volume of work, is design review, projects that don't necessarily need to come to RDRC, but many that do. And we have a couple that are fine tuning some of their drawings and design solutions, so we'll keep you informed, but I suspect that we will have some coming forward within the next- I don't know, I don't think we have anything for the 19th. I'll have to double check, but we'll be in touch.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at whatever time it is. Let me see, 8:57.